Mayor Walker, we're ready to begin when you are.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Willer. Good evening. I would like to call this virtual meeting of the City Council of the City of Charlottesville to order. Ms. Thomas, would you do roll call, please?
Mr. Payne? Mr. Snook? Mr. Snook? Ms. Walker?
Present.
Ms. McGill?
Present.
Ms. Hill?
Here.
And I did not hear Mr. Snook. Are you, is he on the line?
He is. Let me make sure his mic is activated. Mr. Snook, can you hear us? How about now? Mr. Snook, can you hear us? We are hearing audio from his machine.
Mr. Snook?
I'm sending him a message. Mr. Snook says he cannot hear us at the moment.
Okay, so just to let the public know, we just have a glitch that we're trying to work out, and we'll resume the meeting soon as we can get Counselor Snook connected.
And, let's see. Looks like Mr. Snook can hear us now.
Okay.
Let me try one more time. Mr. Snook, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Okay.
Great. And Ms. Thomas was doing the roll.
Mr. Snook, can you hear me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I would like to move to amend the agenda.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to add item six to the agenda, and that would be titled Discussion of the City's Response to COVID-19.
I'd second that motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So I heard a five vote, or in favor of that. All right. Are there any announcements other than our statements?
Yes, Mayor Walker, I have some announcements.
Vice Mayor Hill?
Counselor Hill.
I'm sorry, Counselor Hill, apologies. If I could, could I get a counselor to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Oh, sure, yes. So moved. I moved to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so that carries five zero.
So Mayor Walker, I do have a couple of quick announcements.
Any announcements?
This is regarding the city's website. The city is moving to a new website and internet address starting on Monday, April 27th, a week from today. Next week, we hope you'll visit the completely redesigned website at www charlottesville.gov. It is a mobile-friendly and modern design that makes it much easier to find what is most important about city services. New website, new domain, same commitment to service. Secondly, I wanted to remind everyone about the Charlotte Seaville 360. Council is pleased to announce that since our last meeting, our communications team has launched a new program called Seaville 360, a program to inform and engage the Charlottesville community. airing twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 11:00 a.m., the show allows you to hear straight from city leadership about our response to the coronavirus pandemic and learn about other news from the city. You can find the broadcast on the city's website, Facebook, Twitter, and Comcast Channel 10. In addition, the program allows us to hear directly from you. A companion Zoom webinar, like the one we are using tonight, allows you to ask questions and to get answers. Tune in live or on demand, all while practicing social distancing. Visit the city's website calendar for program details. And I just want to follow up and just say thank you to Brian and the communications team for all the great work that they've done to kind of pull that together over these last weeks. It certainly has been a great resource for our community, and we encourage you to look back at those programs that we've already had that you may have missed, and I hope you'll tune in in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other announcements? No? Just one quick announcement for Charlottesville housing residents. We were contacted through former Counselor Wes Bellamy to get a, for Centerra, to partner with Centerra, to get testing in our housing community, specifically targeting African-American residents of the community due to the COVID-19 and the effect that it's having on the African-American community across the country. So we are working on that as we speak with a group of community leaders. And just wanted, when people start hearing about it, and we just had our first meeting last week, we are just getting started with the planning, but we will be in contact soon with residents of Crescent Halls to see if they are interested in participating in this initiative.
And I, I just had one really quick announcement as well, which is just for anyone in the community who's watching this, who is either looking for resources for support or interested in donating, to just check out supportseaville.com, which is a website that the community has put together that collects a bunch of different local resources, as well as ways you can donate. And they're also starting an initiative for folks who are receiving that $1,200 check, if they would like to donate it to community members or nonprofits who are addressing the COVID-19 crisis. That supportseaville.com is just a good centralized area for resources.
Thank you, Counselor Payne. Are there any other announcements? Okay, so we decided to each either make a statement or read a prepared statement just so that we could connect with the community. There are only a few ways that we can connect with the community and keep the community safe and ourselves safe, and everyone's trying to figure out what that looks like during COVID-19. And we have not mastered it, but we've been working really hard to try to figure out how to keep a connection, make greater connection, and make sure information is flowing. And so each council member will just spend some time making remarks that they have on their heart or have prepared. And so I'm just going, we didn't do an order, but Counselor McGill, Vice Mayor McGill, did you want to start?
And Sina, can you unmute your mic?
She looks like she might be frozen.
Okay, so. Counselor Hill, would you like to start?
Wait, there she is.
Okay.
It says her band.
Can you hear me?
Low, yeah.
We can hear you.
I'm having some pretty serious bandwidth issues for some reason suddenly.
Yeah, and I just froze too, I think, so it maybe happened into all of us.
Yeah, I don't think it's from my end. Am I freezing now, or am I going?
Your image is freezing, but we can hear you all right, so.
Okay. Um, well. Can you hear me? No.
Yes.
I can.
Okay, I'm sorry, just told me it was, I was disconnected. Sorry. What I would like to share is that I'm very proud of our community for as much as we have come together to work towards supporting each other. And I know that we need to continue doing that, and one of the ways that we're going to continue is are opening their doors, like Georgia right now, that it just disturbs me greatly to think that that economic pressure is, is making people risk their lives. I know personally.
Can't hear now.
Every way that we can. And to encourage everyone to keep supporting each other as best we can. Sorry, that's what I have to say right now.
Thank you. Counselor Snook, would you like to share? Counselor Snook?
We're switching to his video.
Mr. Snook, can you?
Heard that, that's the first thing I've heard in about thirty seconds.
Okay. Counselor Snook, would you like to share your statement, prepared or just from the heart? That's where we are now.
Sure. Let me try. I I note that my bandwidth is also low, which I don't understand, since I've got Ting and I'm only about 50 yards from City Hall. But anyway, thing is, I think all of us have on city council and certainly in the with the placing on some consequences, that we know that there are roughly 40 people in the city of Charlottesville who have come down with COVID-19, according to the latest data from the Health Department. But in terms of what we see, what the, the information that's given to us and the decisions that we are called upon to make, we're, we're spending a lot of our time right now, because it's the budget season, talking about budget. And the dilemma, the real problem is that the, the essential conditions of, that are going to determine what we can do are not within our control. We don't have control over what's happening nationally. We don't have control over what's probably going to be the most important decision, the thing that's going to most directly affect our financial well-being, and that's whether the university reopens physically. In my, my best guess at this point is that it will not, in which case, we're going to have some even more serious financial difficulties than what the budget we will be talking about in a little bit is, is going to deal with. On the other hand, we also have a plan for that, and that's also, I think, something that's, that's worth noting that the staff, and particularly the finance staff, have been working, I know, nights and weekends, because I've talked to them nights and weekends, over some of these issues. And just a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of struggle and a lot of agonizing going into it all. As I say, we don't have the ability to, to write checks, except in a very limited degree. We have some ability to make grants, of course. We were intending, as recently as about a month ago, to be making grants totaling about $2 million, and we had spent a lot of time agonizing over what those grants would be. Now it looks, I think that the, the draft budget that has been submitted to us by staff at the moment basically says, we're not going to make those contributions, or we're not going to apportion that money right now. I want to emphasize, because I got a lot of emails just in the last couple of days about this, we'll talk about it more, but the decision, number one, no decisions have been made yet. Number two, the only proposal here was to hold those decisions in abeyance and to not make the decisions right away, but we will obviously have to make decisions about giving money to nonprofits that are going to be dealing with the most important issues. Issues of food, issues of, of safety and medical care, issues of housing. And we, we're going to have an opportunity or a problem, depending on your perspective, to rethink a lot of things that we've been doing over the last few years, and we will end up making different decisions this year, and that's, that's going to be stressful for everybody. So the main message that I would have is, everybody, please understand that everybody else is facing pretty much as difficult a decision as you are probably facing, and certainly I recognize that. And that means, among other things, be kind to one another, and I hope that people will be kind not only in this meeting, but hereafter and then moving forward. So those are my only thoughts right now.
Thank you. Counselor Hill?
Sure, I'll, I'll be brief, but I don't echo what was said earlier. It's just been really just energizing, just to see different groups come together and, and support each other. And as I said during one of the 360s that I was on, I think it's important that we don't silo our community in any way with the, the city or the county is doing one thing, or the, the community is energized and doing other things, that we all are working together. And going back to Michael's point, like this support Seaville site is a perfect example of that, of just everyone kind of aligning behind, like this is where people are coming. Okay, let's get all of our resources in one location and work together, because it's going to take a community effort to get us through this crisis. I also think, obviously, right now, top of mind is our budget, and I know that topics that are coming up involve both how we're going to allocate those resources that Counselor Snook was just referring to, and I think it is important that we kind of clarify it's not that we're zeroing out those dollars, we're just taking a pause to kind of recalibrate, like where are those dollars best going to serve the most people in our community that are in the greatest need right now. Obviously, there's housing funding dollars that are being, that are kind of in a holding pattern as well. We were going to be allocating our CAF dollars, and now we're in a position where we just need to really look at what the housing needs are that are most urgent for those in our community. And so the bar theme for me is both, as we look at the city as an organization and the community, that the people have to come first. And so our employees are certainly the top of my priority list, as well as how do we best serve the people in this community? And so I look forward to working with my colleagues and with staff, who has been diligently working through this pandemic over the last, you know, five, six more weeks, so that we all can kind of march to that, that vision, and I do believe it's a shared vision. As, as Mayor Walker said, or someone said earlier, each of us kind of has different formats by which we communicate with the community, and if you feel like you need to hear more from us, we're certainly open to that. I know that some of us are more comfortable in social media. I certainly try to keep up with the emails that are coming in and going, and try to be responsive to that. And so I think that each of us is trying to find our way to communicate out to different members of the community that we, you know, that we have more networks with, and so just if we're happy to have feedback about ways that we can do that better and, and ways that we should be speaking to the community more often, and in what formats are most appreciated. So really just looking forward to hearing from the community tonight on ways that we can do this better. And again, just for me, it's, it really comes down just to the people and prioritizing the people in our community and in our organization.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Payne?
Sure. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I just echo a lot of what others have said. I know, certainly for ourselves, and I think everyone in the community, this is a time of a lot of uncertainty, a lot of fear, and you know, we are talking with phone calls, texts, emails, social media every day with community members who are facing crises and concerns about both the public health crisis aspect of this, but as well as the economic crisis that it has created. You know, there is not a single individual in this or nonprofit or our community who has not already been affected by this pandemic, and that's something which, you know, we are, we are deeply aware of, and we're committed to doing everything that we have the resources and legal authority to do, to try to address that. And both as a council and as a city government, you know, we've been working every day to figure out creative ways to respond to this, and have taken a number of actions, including, you know, suspending Section 8 voucher terminations and evictions in our CHA properties, suspending utility shut-offs. Brian Wheeler in the Communications Department, working on new programs with Seaville 360 and ways to get the word out to the community, while is encouraging public comment while still maintaining social distancing. We've seen the Office of Economic Development work to create programs with loan funds and marketing campaigns to support our local restaurants and small businesses. You know, we're working within city government to try and do everything we can to make sure that our city employees are still able to be employed and receive their checks. And that's just, you know, a little bit of some of the actions that we've taken, and we're still looking to do anything we can and work creatively with the community to find ways to take action. As others have mentioned, I think some of the most important work that's being done is a lot of the community work, the mutual aid work and solidarity economics that's going on in our community that we, as a local government, want to amplify and support, again, in terms of supportseaville.com, the initiatives to make masks and personal protective equipment and get that to frontline workers and nurses and city employees. And I think that's going to be one of the most important things going forward, is our partnership with community groups who are on the front lines, really working to address the economic and social impacts of this, as well as being aware that in terms of both positive cases and deaths around the country, you know, the impact of COVID-19 are not being felt evenly, and in terms of the disproportionate impact on black communities, the low-income communities in our country, that we're doing everything to intentionally address that. And finally, you know, I'd say, you know, we're doing everything we can locally, but an important piece of this is just that as a locality, you know, this is a national crisis, and it's, we're doing everything we can locally, but we're also going to need action from a state and federal level when we look at the shortages of testing, PPE, when we look at the amount of money needed to support small businesses, when we looking at getting money into the hands of families. You know, our budget is $190 million, and this is a kind of problem that is going to require billions and billions, if not trillions of dollars across the country, as well as substantial action at the state and federal level. So we are continuing to do everything we can to, to try and encourage that and, and try and make sure that we're positioned to take advantage of actions that are being taken at a state and federal level. And finally, you know, I just want to thank the frontline workers, you know, the nurses, grocery workers, bus drivers, firefighters, everyone who is dealing with this on the front lines and risking their life every day. And I think, you know, we need to thank those workers, not just in words, but, but with providing them unions and collective bargaining and living wages and good benefits. And finally, I hope a major priority, I think, in Virginia is, you know, the COVID-19 outbreaks we're seeing in jail, prisons, and detention centers, and that's not something that we have direct control over, but just continuing to make sure that folks in our detention centers, jails, and prisons, as many are released as possible. I know we're seeing a lot of COVID-19 outbreaks there as well, and I know our local jail system has taken a number of actions to release inmates, but our state prisons and other local jails are not necessarily taking the same actions that our local regional jail system is, and I just know that's a major crisis. That's another part of this that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I guess that's me. I just want, you know, first to just say thank you to the community, the people who have offered maybe what only seems like, you know, their willingness to figure out how to survive this. If that has been your only contribution at this point, that is a great contribution. And then for the community members who have stepped out and have been attempting to coordinate at a community level to make sure that we are connected and that the individuals who need, have the most needs at this time, we appreciate you more than we would ever be able to verbalize. To the employees who are working, who are staying at home and remaining safe, to those who are on the front lines and making sure that things that the rest of us never have to think about are put in place so that, you know, we are safe, we appreciate you again more than we'll ever be able to verbalize. The, I, I think what I should spend my time on is that hoping that we all understand that we have created a pretty unequal and unjust society. And we don't want to learn the lessons that I think we'll learn with COVID-19 if we don't respond to this differently, that we all need each other, you know, to get through this, and we won't make it through this without one another. What is most important when you think about unequal societies and unjust societies is that there are usually people that are disregarded as those who lack the ability to even contribute. And what we are learning, and what I am very proud of, is the effort that the community and staff have made to ensure that people who normally we don't see, that we see, and that we make sure that their needs are met. And by making sure their needs are met, every one of our needs are met. And as long as we continue that path where we put people first, and we know that there will be great economic consequences. And in a society that's built the way that ours is, there's no other way for, you know, it to happen. Like that lesson will be learned, but every decision that we make today will determine what our recovery looks like, like how we come out of this. And we can make those decisions off the backs of other people, or we can make those decisions and uplift and care for each and every one of us. And I just hope that we're making those decisions where when we get to the end of this, that we can look back and say, because we did that in a way that was full of grace and compassion, that we're in a much better place today. But we'll take a lot of hard decisions. I'm sure we will all lose something that we find valuable. We, you know, may feel like we're losing our minds at times. This is such an unknown. No one could have prepared for this. It's one of those things, even if you had, I'm sure, bioterrorism training, that there was no way for you to be ready when it happened. that there was no way for you to be ready when it happened until it happened. But I am just, you know, happy to be a part of this community and the work that we're doing together and the way that we're taking care of one another. And I appreciate all of you who are stepping up in every way that you can. And if you need something for us that you don't feel like you're getting, and we don't have all the answers, and we're trying to figure that out too. Just send an email, send a Facebook message, you know, try to connect with us through phone. But I ask that all of us understand that the stressors that each and every one of us are under and try to send those requests with as much compassion and grace as possible. All right. Is everyone there? I saw some people leaving the meeting. So next we have the consent agenda. Am I in the meeting alone?
I just got, what was it? Get back on. I got kicked off for some reason.
Okay.
Okay. Ready for consent agenda?
Ms. Thomas, did you get kicked off or had? Yes.
I may have frozen. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, consent agenda, A, minutes, March 12, budget work session, March 16, special and regular meetings. March 25, special meeting. B appropriation, domestic violence services coordinator grant, forty nine thousand three hundred thirty six dollars. Appropriation. C appropriation Charlottesville area transit supplemental appropriation of F Y twenty twenty transit grants, two million twenty one thousand six hundred six dollars. First of two readings. D resolution, service authorities quarterly update.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Willer, are there any members of the public who would like to speak on the consent agenda?
If anyone would like to speak at this part of the meeting? They can raise their hands. We do have somebody.
The consent agenda.
And we do have one person. And this is Sean Tubbs. Sean, you're live with city council. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Great. Just one small observation on the CAT appropriations budget that's in there. There's a line in there about that there, and this might, oh, sorry, I should say who I am, Sean Tubbs, P. Buck Environmental Council. I just want to say here that there's a line in there about public comment and public community engagement in the staff report. And the question I have is that I didn't know that that could have triggered a public comment session at the M P O level. I don't think there's necessarily anything in there, but I would just say that, you know, I'm not saying you should or should not talk about this item tonight. I would just say that transit obviously is being hit pretty hard by this. I don't think there's anything in this particular appropriation that's bad. But I do think though, that as we think about what's going to come out on the other side of this, we should be maybe looking at this appropriation a little bit differently. And perhaps a public hearing about that might be something that the M P O might have in the future. But obviously, not trying to hold this up, just wanted to make a comment about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on an item on the consent agenda?
That's it, Mayor Walker.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
No second.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Nope.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is Michael still here?
He's on there.
Aye. So that carries five to zero. And the transit supplemental appropriation, it will be on the next agenda for a vote. So if there are any questions or comments, maybe members of the public could get those in before, before the next meeting. Okay. All right. Next up, we have the city manager's response to our previous meetings, March 16th and March 25th.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council and to the public. Good seeing everyone again. Nothing really major to report. I just want to say that, you know, we're trying to convey to the public as much information as possible and in a timely manner. So what we want to do is make sure that that information is getting out to you. And one of the things that we're planning to do is at our next either work session or next city council or even both, to be able to convey some of the information that we provide to the city council on a daily basis to the public about what we're doing in all of our respective departments. And also too, another method that I thought would be very, very beneficial was the introduction of the Seville three sixty program, which is ran by Mr. Brian Wheeler to make sure that all the information that we're actually doing throughout this COVID nineteen crisis is being shared with the public, as well as the different things that we're doing internally in terms of our day to day operations and the services that we're still providing throughout the community. That's all I have for this meeting, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the first session, section of our community matters. And if you are interested in speaking, then Mr. Willer will know the, as you come in, and he will get you on with us.
And if you're on the webinar, all you need to do is click the raise your hand icon, and we'll call on people in the order in which they raise their hands.
Do we have anyone that's?
We do have people raising their hands now. Mayor Walker, Nancy Carpenter. Nancy, you're on with city council. Go ahead.
Good evening, and thank you all for allowing me to address the city council this evening in some very important topic areas, which is the intersection of public health, public health and housing. And we know from the data out there, who in our community is most adversely affected by the housing crisis and the health crisis. And I'll just speak on the housing crisis because I don't know much. I'm not a expert at all about this health crisis, although we're learning a lot. One of the things I really have heard during my webinars about a lot of this funding and a lot of activities, I think would be beneficial for the city to look at, to, you know, commit to people and their housing. Looking at ways to perhaps provide grants to landlords that, that are, that have tenants who will not be able to pay any or even a portion of their rent for the next few months. We see the, the, the economic news that's happening in the stock market and, you know, a lot of resource markets with oil and everything like that. This is going to be a very deep situation for a lot of people. And I think the city has made a tremendous commitment to housing and affordable housing over the last few years. Certainly, you know, the impetus was there until we kind of went off the tracks with this pandemic and trying to get back on the tracks, how that new track looks. It's not going to look like it did before March, you know, or January. So if we can, you know, maintain that deep commitment to scrap to those vouchers, I've seen how important it's been to people, the redevelopment of our public housing and friendship court, the commitments made there. I hope still maintain those. Because, because housing is now, but it's also still in the future. We still have to think about what that's going to look like, you know, five years from now. Because at some point, we'll come out of this. You know, what will look like, you know, is up to us to write it, I think. But I do believe that, you know, creating to, to look at tenant preservation. I think that's what Dr. Desmond was talking about today, was tenant preservation initiatives that can keep our folks housed, because we don't need to see tens of thousands of people, you know, sleeping in the different parks that we have. So, you know, please, I'm probably getting close to the end of my time. But, you know, please look at funding housing initiatives as much as you possibly can over the course of this budget cycle. I know that, you know, everybody's taking a hit. But I think that if we can maintain your commitment and the community's commitment to housing, that, that will also impact some of the public health issues that many people in our community are facing. And, and thank you for my time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, Mayor Walker, Brandon Collins. Brandon, you're on with council. Go ahead.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. Brandon Collins. I live in Charlottesville. I work for the Housing Association of Resilience FAR, which is also a member of the CLIC. And just want to build on what, what Nancy just brought forward. How important it is to recognize, you know, there was a housing crisis two months ago. And this entire community was spent a number of years moving towards addressing that. And that's awesome. And of course, now we probably have an even bigger crisis. And so there's this, this priority for the city. And I hope that your, your new budget still moves things forward to address that crisis with the understanding that things are significantly worse now. I think April's rent being due for folks wasn't too hard. Really worried about May first rent and June first rent and what happens when we come out of this. So one thing that I think would be important is gathering the housing advisory committee, finding a work session, or at least a meeting of that group possible. You know, with the focus on addressing the current emergency as it relates to housing would be a really wise decision. Bringing the hack together, housing providers, government folks, so we can, you know, kind of see what are the needs, what are the priorities, what are the resources? So there can be really good coordination on sort of a mini housing strategy moving forward as well as, you know, just I know it's hard. I know everybody's feeling, you know, pretty bummed that a lot of great progress may have to be slowed down for the coming year, but prioritizing housing development, making sure there's money for projects that are ready to be built, that have been approved, that are just need to move forward as fast as possible. And making sure those resources can still get pumped out there to the community in a, in a big way. Other than that, appreciate all the good words y'all gave earlier in the meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker?
Yeah, I think I hear Counselor Hill.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Blair, that our, just like we can conduct meetings remotely if it's tied to the emergency, our advisory committees can also conduct meetings remotely if it's tied to the emergency.
I, yes, Counselor Hill, that is correct. In terms of advisory committees and other city bodies, authorities as well, if they are meeting to directly address the COVID nineteen virus and the emergency declaration issued by Dr. Richardson on December 12, they can still meet through electronic means.
Thank you. I guess that next is I, that we would just need to have a discussion about where we were. And if there are any, because I don't even remember what the last decision point was made regarding hack, but Mr. Blair, would there be any reason that, like, would we have to give new parameters or would they be able to function under the previous their previous guidelines if we made this decision?
Well, good question. What the hack, as you recall, before the city manager's emergency declaration, there were questions about some reforms as to accessory dwelling units as well as an affordable dwelling unit ordinance. But the hack, independent of that, and what you're speaking of, Mayor Walker, if, if they wanted to convene a session to say, what is our commissions, or I should say committees' response to COVID nineteen and what can we recommend to council or the planning commission directly related to the emergency itself? And the housing issues that it will provide, they can do that right now under the ordinance. Now, certainly, I think if council requested them to meet, that's certainly more impetus for them to me. But I think they currently, under the ordinance, could, if it was directly related to COVID nineteen and the city manager's declaration, they could, in fact, meet right now and call a meeting as long as it complies with the three day notice and other legal requirements.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Willer?
Mayor Walker, next is Tanisha Hudson. Tanisha, you're live with council. Go ahead. Tanisha, can you hear us? You may need to unmute your mic one more time.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Now we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hello, this is Tanisha Hudson, and I live at, oh, right now, I'm just board in the House Board. So I would like to address a few things. One, at the last council meeting, I came, well, you know, I made a, a comment about what you guys were going to do with utilities, with us possibly starting to come out of the COVID nineteen crisis. What do you guys have in place as far as taxes are concerned? Are you going to give people time to pay taxes? I know, because I've been doing some research on this, that you know, certain creditors are asking people to call back in within thirty and sixty days to give an update on where they are financially. Are you guys going to put something like that in place? As much as I feel like the city should do for the community members, I do feel like, you know, as a, you know, like, we have to also do something on our end, like, check back in and say if or when we're able, you know, to pay certain debts, especially for people that lost their jobs. Like, they should checking in with you guys to see where, you know, to update where they are with paying taxes and utilities and so forth, because that's where most creditors are going. Mortgages, credit cards, whoever. Also, the housing vouchers for people who have emergency vouchers that was part of the equity package that you guys were going a few years back, some of those vouchers are ending. And so while we're in a crisis, people are about to be homeless. What are you doing to extend those vouchers? Are you going to extend those vouchers and let people stay in the units? And if so, like, you guys got to get a jump on it because some people are already being put out of their place because they're losing emergency vouchers. So like, some people have already lost theirs. I know a couple of girls who have reached out to me who lost their vouchers. And now they have nowhere, like, they're staying with someone. So like, these are things that, you know, should have already been discussed before we even got in a pandemic crisis to begin with. Like, what was going to happen after those vouchers ended in two years? And I felt like that was thrown on a back burner. Like, so now you have people who were issued those vouchers in July that's, that's possibly going to be without a home and kids put in the street in the middle of a pandemic crisis. Because even though we may come out of it a little bit, we're still going to be in it as far as how the world is going to turn back. And who's going to feel safe enough? Even if the world opens up in a month or two months, who going to feel safe enough to go out there? Like, we seen this play before with the flu pandemic in the early nineteen hundreds. They opened everything up and more people got sick. So I just think that there's some things beyond the budget that, that should be talked about. And maybe y'all talking about it, but I feel like you need to do something. need to do something about it. Like, you shouldn't be talking. There should be some action put behind it.
So, just a couple of those, there hasn't been any information from the housing authority that they have pulled any that I have seen. So, I will check on that again and see if there have been people who've lost the vouchers. We would have to come back for discussion because the original intent was to give some people the ability to get a break and some assistance, and then to open that up so that other people could get a break and some assistance, knowing that we don't have the resources to keep everyone on and bring in new people. I would agree that at this time, that no one should be losing whatever is supporting them in housing. And to my understanding, based on the information CRJ has put out, that has been the case, but we will check with them. And in terms of utilities, I think we have that pretty much figured out. And again, it was a discussion that Counselor Payne had brought up before our meeting, and we had been making some, you know, we had had that discussion and given some direction to the City Manager about our desires for making sure that people were not cut off. And then, as everyone read in the paper, I didn't read it, but what was in the paper, that was just follow-up discussions, as we will have those follow-up discussions, where as things come up, to just ensure that people who may have been previously disconnected were reconnected. So, we're having every conversation that comes up and attempting to, you know, figure out how to mitigate the impact on people that would be negative.
And I would add on the, about taxes as well. Todd Divers, our Commissioner of the Revenue and the Treasurer, announced several weeks ago that all late penalties and fees for late due taxes will be suspended, as well as one of the agenda items for tonight is to push back the due date for real estate, personal property, and machinery and tools tax payments. But that's definitely, you know, that tax side of it is definitely something that, you know, we're looking at and is a major priority as well.
Yes, and the extension, there also is the ability for individuals to call in and get on a payment plan. And the staff is very aware that everyone will have, you know, unique needs, and they are expecting to have those conversations based on individual circumstances. And as long as people keep in touch and let, you know, the city know where they stand and what their needs are, staff is committed to working with them. All right, Mr. Willer, do you have?
No one else at this time has raised their hand. Somebody else just did. If you're watching via the webinar, and you would like to speak during Community Matters, you can click the Raise Your Hand icon, and that will put you in the queue to speak to City Council. Next up, Mayor Walker is Rory Stolzenberg. Rory, you're on the webinar. Go ahead. Let's try that again, Rory. Hold on for just a second. I'm going to, Rory, I'm going to, if you just hold on just a moment. And Rory, I'm afraid it's giving an error message about your version of Zoom, so I was not able to promote you to a panelist or enable your microphone. If you want to rejoin the meeting after upgrading your Zoom client, that might resolve that problem. Is there anyone else who would like to raise their hand to speak to counsel at this time?
Is there any, does anyone want to raise their hands?
No additional participants have raised their hand.
And you will have an opportunity to speak during our Matters by the Public at the end of the meeting, too. You can also reach us through email. And again, if you can't, you call, you Zoom through the webinar, and you would like us to read your statement, we will definitely, you know, do that during the time, or at the end of the meeting, we will make sure that that information gets out there. And we're also exploring additional ways for people who may have challenges with online routes to be able to have the ability to call in. Or, so we're exploring every avenue possible and trying to figure out how to make it work.
Mayor Walker, we have Rory Stolzenberg back. Rory, can you hear us now? And can you say a few words?
Yeah, hopefully you guys can hear me now.
Now we can hear you.
I guess Zoom webinars don't like Linux. So, I wanted to commend you guys on getting a new website. It's definitely much needed. I wanted to ask about what the plans were for the existing website, and whether you guys were going to leave it up from now on at charlottesville.org, so that things aren't lost forever, or if there were some plans to archive it as we transition to the newer Slim Down site. Thanks, and thanks for all the great work you guys are doing.
Mr. Willer, do you have an answer for that?
Sure, Mayor Walker and counsel and the public. We, the good news is, we have that, the current site on our own server, and so we will be maintaining a copy of all of that information. Given the dramatic changes we're making to the website, we've gone from about 2,000 pages down to about 500 on the new charlottesville.gov site. A number, obviously, a number of links are going to be broken, and there's not a lot we can do about that. We will be redirecting the most common public links back to their counterparts on the new website. But if Rory or any other members of the public notice something that's on the old, was on the old site, and they can't find it on the new site, we will have that data, and we'll make sure it gets back, and it's available.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that has raised their hand?
There is not. That is it.
So, we're going to close Community Matters. And next up, this is not eight, we have a resolution establishing June 30th as the city's fiscal year for 2021 budget adoption deadline. And Mr. Dr. Richardson will be presenting?
That is correct. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Member City Council, and the public. As all of you are aware, on March 12th, 2020, I declared an emergency due to the potential spread of COVID-19. And then on March 25th, 2020, the City Council enacted an emergency ordinance, which waived statutory deadlines created by local laws. And due to the COVID-19 emergency, council was unable to conduct its budget work sessions, as well as its April 6 regular meeting. This has caused council to miss its April 15 deadline, which is mandated by the Virginia Code. So, what this resolution basically does, it establishes June 30th as the date by which the council will adopt the FY 21 budget.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from council?
No.
Any questions? No? All right. Is there a motion?
I move we adopt a resolution establishing June 30th, 2020, as the deadline for the City Council to adopt a budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Okay. And is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any further discussion?
No.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, aye. So, that carries five to zero. Okay. Next, we have a resolution establishing calendar year 2020 tax rates. And Mr. Blair, our attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Walker and councilors. The tax rate is set on a calendar year basis of the real property, personal property.
Mr. Willer, do you know what that is?
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Blair.
Okay, Mr. Blair, he said you could continue.
Okay. And last year, the council set the tax rates by ordinance. The council, it does not appear from discussions, wishes to alter the personal property, the machinery and tools, or the real property tax rate for the coming calendar year 2020. There's no formal action that's actually required, since an ordinance remains in place. But in order for more public transparency, there's a resolution before you that simply states that the tax rates for those classifications of taxes, meaning real property, machinery and tools, and personal property, will remain the same in calendar year 2020 as they did, as they were assessed in calendar, I'm sorry, not assessed, but levied in calendar year 2019.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blair. Are there any questions, council members? No questions? All right. Is there a motion?
I move we adopt a resolution establishing these tax rates as presented.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Missing one.
Mr. Snuck. He has his mute on. Sorry.
Mr. Willer, listen, listen, listen.
Aye, sorry.
All right, aye. So, that carries.
Aye, sorry.
Aye.
All right, so that carries. Okay. All right, next up, we have a resolution establishing June 19th, 2020, as deadline for real estate, tangible personal property, and machinery, tools, tax payments. And Dr. Richardson will present?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, counsel, public, once again. As a result of my declaration of a local emergency, as I mentioned previously, and the declaration of a state emergency by the governor, they both basically altered our government operations. And since that was the case, and it continues to be, it was only right to recommend moving the due date from June 5th to June 19th. And by passing this resolution, the council would extend the tax payment deadline to June 19th. But I would like to say also, too, as I've talked to Mr. Vandiver, the Treasurer, that, you know, we strongly encourage folks to call in and basically, you know, talk to his department in terms of if they need any assistance or a payment plan moving forward. And his department is willing to work with our residents in the community, if that should be the case. And I know Jason is on the line, and he can expand upon that if he would like.
Yes, Mr. Vandiver, would you like to share thoughts? Aye.
Good evening, counsel. As Mr. Richardson indicated, we would welcome anyone to contact us on a case-by-case basis if they're having trouble meeting that June 19th deadline. And we can definitely work with anyone who needs a little more time to make their payments if they're under a financial hardship. And, you know, as we mentioned earlier, is we're able to just stay in contact over whatever time period we agree on that works for the taxpayer. We can extend those payments until they're able to make them.
Thank you. And just to add to that, I guess I do that during discussion. Okay. So, are there any other questions from council members?
I just, Mr., just wanted to make sure that we clarified this for the public, that this two weeks is kind of the extent of what we're able to do by code. Is that right, Mr. Blair?
Counselor Hill, to answer your question, this is based on the calendar and adopting a fiscal year starting July 1. June 19th really seems to be the last date. Since the fiscal year starts on July 1, part of the June taxes go towards actually supplementing revenues for fiscal year, I shouldn't say supplementing, but actually completing the revenues for fiscal year 20, which, as you know, the council has to have a balanced budget, and those taxes are integral to balancing that budget before the June 30th deadline for fiscal year 20. So, I think June 19th, and Dr. Richardson or Mr. Vandiver can jump in. I think that's kind of the last date that you can, that the city can, in effect, collect taxes and still have the collections come in and have enough time to meet both fiscal year 20's obligations and to start fiscal year 21.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right. Is there a motion?
I move we adopt, I move we establish June 19th, 2020, as a deadline for real estate, tangible.
Read that over.
Can you hear me?
Now.
I move we adopt a resolution establishing June 19th, 2020, as deadline for real estate, tangible personal property, and machinery and tools tax payments.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? And I would just, because I was on a radio interview on the Shilling Show, and there was a call-in about, about the, and so, we fully understand that some people, the, just a two-week extension may not be sufficient, and that's why we wanted to ensure that there was a payment plan option for individuals who may not be able to pay by June 19th, and to give you the ability to call in and communicate with staff about what your needs are. And that's not every detail of your personal life, but just that you're experiencing hardship, and that it would be helpful for you to be able to pay X amount, and how long you think that will be, and even if it's an unknown, just keep an open communication, you know, about that will greatly help us. But for individuals who can pay your taxes, understanding that that is how the city operates, and to keep the, you know, city afloat, that that is, you know, why that date, you know, is there. So, and we appreciate every effort that people are making. Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All right? All right?
Actually, Mayor Walker, this is Todd Diver.
Okay.
I was, I thought we were under the impression we were going to be talking about PPTRA or PPTR this, uh, next year. Maybe it didn't make it on the agenda.
I didn't hear you, Todd, you were going out.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Um, I was under the impression that we were going to be talking about the personal property tax relief percentage tonight. And I, I guess I just assumed it was going to be under this agenda item. There was a memo we prepared.
Okay. No, I didn't, Mr. Blair, what are your thoughts? I didn't have that, I, during our 2-2-1, I got, I asked for the information from the closeout, but that isn't a discussion that, that we have had. If you, Mr. Blair, if it's okay that they share, then definitely we're, you know, open to sharing that.
Well, what I might suggest is that maybe after this item is over, there's a brief recess.
Okay.
We've, we've got a memo teed up, I thought we'd sent it in, maybe, you know, maybe something fell through the cracks, but I'll, I'll get it to you.
Okay. All right. Are there any further discussion? All right? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. That carries five to zero. And so at this point, I guess we'll take a quick, well, not a quick, but we'll break until 8:00 PM, and we'll resume then.
All right, ready to go? Mr. Willer?
Mayor Walker, I can see you and Ms. McGill at the moment.
Okay.
I could see Michael Payne, I could see Heather Hill. Dr. Richardson is getting ready, and then we just need Mr. Snook. And now we have Mr. Snook. Mayor Walker, we're ready.
All right, thank you. I called this meeting back to order. And there were some question during our previous discussion. And Mr. Blair and Mr. Divers are gonna shed some insight.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. And during, Mr. Divers had spoken earlier in the meeting during the recess. I spoke with the Clerk of Council and Mr. Divers about the personal property tax relief. And I think there was, there's been a lot of emails going back and forth. And there was some confusion about the agenda. But I'd like, with the Council's indulgence, to read the resolution, which establishes the personal property tax relief for this calendar year, and then turn it over to Mr. Divers to explain that. The resolution itself reads that, "Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Charlottesville, Virginia, that the personal property tax relief percentage on up to $20,000 values for vehicles valued over $1,000 is set at 42% for tax year 2020." And I would ask Mr. Divers to give a brief explanation of that.
I'd have to, yeah, this is the percentage of personal property, essentially car tax, that the state pays. Going back to the Gilmore administration, if you'll recall, when former Governor Gilmore ran on the no car tax platform, the state began paying an increasing percentage of everyone's personal property. And that reached a point that was essentially unsustainable. And so they capped it. And the dollar value that they capped it at is the same amount that localities get to this day. And so what we have to do every year is determine how much of the taxable fleet is going to be, is going to receive that relief. So that's sort of a 30,000-foot view of it. If you, if you need more detail, I've got my Deputy Roz Collins here, who actually does the math. So Roz, if you want to add anything, have at it.
I, I think that was a very good summary, thank you. If you have questions, I'm here, though.
All right, thank you both. Mr. Blair, is this something that we need to vote on tonight? Or can we put it on consent for the next meeting?
I, I think in order for tax bills to go out, and I'll let Mr. Divers talk about this, I think it needs to be passed, enacted tonight.
Yeah, the sooner the better, this.
Okay.
Yeah.
We got you. So is there a motion? And do we have the wording?
Yeah, I just need a little more wording, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah. We would need a motion to establish the 2020 tax year tax relief percentage.
So moved.
Could we just say what those percentage, what they are?
Forty-two percent.
Okay.
It's forty.
So you got that, Heather?
What was, one more time, I'm sorry.
Forty-two. Forty-two percent on the, up to $20,000, on the tax on up to $20,000 value of vehicles, qualifying vehicles who are valued over $1,000.
Okay.
All right, just wanted to make sure that we had those numbers. I don't necessarily know that you have to include them, I just wanted the public to hear them.
Thank you.
And for us to know. All right, so is there a motion?
So we moved to establish the 2020 tax year rates for personal property tax, is that what I'm saying? Yes.
The, the tax relief rate.
Relief rates, yes.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, questions? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm missing one.
I think Lois.
Yeah, waiting for him. Mr. Willer, is he on?
He is on. He explained to me he needs to turn off his speakers before he turns on his microphone. So there may be a slight lag.
Okay.
And I see his picture now, Mr. Snook. And he disappeared. I saw him briefly.
I'm sorry, I was turning off the wrong thing. Aye, again.
Are you in favor of the tax relief percentage that was presented?
Yes, I am.
All right, an aye, so that carries five to zero. All right, thank you all for that. Next, we have the resolution establishing a plan for adopting the budget for fiscal year 2021 and establishing a budget public hearing date. Dr. Richardson will present.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council to the public. One thing that I want to do before I go into that, and I'll cover the bases in terms of establishing the, the plan for adopting the budget for fiscal year 20 to 21. But, you know, I want to be able to provide some background as to where we ended in March, and to where we presently are, and our path forward. As we talked about before, you know, there's been some changes in our dates due to COVID-19. And we want to be able to provide everyone with a basic update about everything that's going on and what we plan to do moving forward in terms of the budget. And, you know, although we're going through this, I would say, trying time, I think that we'll be able to continue to maintain our public services, as well as our personnel, as well as continue doing the things that we've been able to do in the community. But, you know, there will be some struggles. And as we see now, and as I talked about it too, when we were back in March, when our original projections, we were just anticipating a loss of 1.25 million in FY20, and just 4.7 in FY21. But as we continue to look at our financials overall, we started seeing the impact that it was having on our overall revenues. So what I wanted to do was just give you a snapshot of FY20, what the adopted budget was, which was 188 million. And, you know, after we did our revisions in terms of looking at our overall revenues, we dropped it down to 185, which is a, you know, a $3 million loss in revenue. And then moving forward, as we were planning and continuing to do our planning for FY21, I was proposing a budget of $196 million. But after we started looking at the overall economic conditions within our community, we revised that down to $191 million. So we're looking at right now as an anticipated loss of revenue of five, over $5 million. Now, I just want counsel to understand and keep in mind that that number can continue to go downward, or if the economic conditions change, it could move upwards. But we'll talk a little bit more about that as I go through this presentation and give you more information about the budget. So what I wanted to do right here was basically, I'm not gonna go through every single line item, but what I wanted to do is show you some of our key categories that you see in the document that you have within your, within your packet in terms of where we are as far as our overall taxes, and how we looked at the overall revenue reductions pertaining to each line item. And I outline that per year. As you can look through your packet and you look, and you look at the budget, you can see where we had made those reductions in FY20 and 21 for local taxes. And then also too, as you move on, you look at the other key line items, licensing permits, and also miscellaneous revenue. We don't have anything as far as decreasing in FY20, but in FY21, as you can see, that revenue reduction, as well as with miscellaneous revenues in FY21. Charges for services, and intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenue, said before, with those, you know, their key reductions, as well as the intergovernmental revenue. As you can see in FY20, we don't have anything, but in FY21, we see some reduction in those particular areas. Moving forward with our designated revenue in those key categories. And then also too, what I wanted to do is just outline some of our major increases and additions for our original FY20 appropriations. And this was things that we did throughout the fiscal year, in this current fiscal year, with those dollar amounts, as you can see, in those particular budget line item categories. The reductions from our original FY21 proposed. As you can see, some of those key areas that we reduced in order to be able to showcase where we are currently for our proposed FY21 budget. And keep in mind that we are using, as mentioned before, we're using FY20 budget expenditures. That's why you see these proposed reductions for FY21. The additional information and considerations, as we mentioned before, we are holding $8.5 million as far as our reserve right now, just to make sure that we do have enough funds to get us through. And, and this is basically the reserve. And 1.6 from this is changing revenues and expenditure. 6.9 of that is a deferment of the capital projects. And as you can see there, we have the brief explanation of what we're doing in terms of the capital projects. We're still working on that. And then as we move forward, you know, we'll provide more information to the council in terms of what our overall plans are. But as, and I like to mention too, that reserve, we want to keep it at that level and not dip into that as we move forward. So we're doing everything on our side to be able to maintain, you know, our overall revenues, as well as try to manage our overall expenditures within the fiscal, within fiscal year 21. And I know we're gonna talk a lot more about the vibrant community fund. I know everyone has been asked a lot of questions about that. But I know that we're gonna have a revised funding strategy to talk about, you know, the availability of funding, as well as provision of services that are gonna be provided in the upcoming fiscal year. So I know we'll have more discussions pertaining to the vibrant community fund tonight. But one thing that we wanted to do is basically talk about what we're gonna try to do in terms of making sure that agencies who are receiving funding from the city, that, you know, in those agreements that we do have the right to withhold or adjust monthly in their quarterly payments due to them having ceased operations or reductions of services to our residents. And then, as we talked about before, any new programs or positions at this current time will be deferred. But as we come back, and we'll talk a little bit more about that too, later on in the fiscal year, or in the first or second quarter of the fiscal year, we'll have further conversations in terms of what our overall plan of action is as things start to level out, if we start to see a shift in our revenues that are upwards, how we can basically put a plan together. And then we talk about that in terms of how the council wants to move forward. And I say like, identify the priority list in terms of what's number one, what's number two, what's number three, that we want to look at funding as we go through this fiscal year and our revenues increase. But they decrease, we have to look at further cuts in different areas. And we'll have that discussion as we move through the fiscal year. What we want to do is basically look at overall, you know, our, because we do have plans in place in terms of looking at our short and long-term financial strategies. You know, one of those things, if students do return to the university, or if they don't return, look at the overall financial impact that it'll have on the community, as well as look at, you know, the peaks that was provided to us in terms of, you know, the UW peak model, which was in April, which we were reached. Or the other models that said we would reach in June, or which the governor has stated that will reach in August. So, you know, we're trying to plan out our budget that, you know, whenever we reach whatever timeframe, that we can also give council, you know, those updates. I'll talk a little bit about that in just a moment. But, you know, as we said before, our key goal is to maintain our overall priorities that we talked about before, in terms of protect our most vulnerable populations, which is our, you know, homeless, as well as our senior community, as well as our folks that are in our affordable housing communities, as well as staff, making sure that, you know, they are protected also as we go through this. But the main thing too, is to also ensure our community that we are maintaining our public services. And, you know, we're doing that by maintaining our services and staying open in terms of, you know, any thing that they may need from City Hall. We have still our public utilities, public works, our police department, fire department, and also too, all of our billing departments. And we're still working in City Hall to be able to maintain those services. And, you know, when people do call in for different things, or they need service, we're there to answer the phone, to be able to assist them, as well as to ensure that we are maintaining our infection patrol policies. The other thing is too, is to maintain our partnerships, as we have been through our IMT, CIMT, as well as our Unified Command, and working with the University of Virginia, our marketing, as well as our nonprofits, you know, to be able to make sure that we are providing the necessary human services, as well as social services to the public. And we continue to do that on a day-to-day basis. And I think that we're doing a relatively good job in terms of providing assistance to those folks who are in need. As I mentioned before, we talked about the budget amendments. This will be based upon the economy. And we'll bring that information back through council budget updates. But we want to make sure that when we start doing those budget amendments, maybe in the fall. But, you know, that gives us enough time to be able to look at overall revenues and expenditures, and for the council exactly, you know, where we at in terms of doing the budget amendments. But the main thing is that, you know, we're gonna continue to work here in the city, and we're gonna continue to do the internal review of our revenues and expenditures on a weekly basis, as well as provide to council on a monthly basis information pertaining to where we at in terms of our revenues and expenditures. So this is, like I said, it's gonna be ongoing about this entire crisis in terms of, you know, our, our look at the budget in terms of our revenue expenditures overall. And as I was getting back to, as far as this resolution, is to talk about the key data. And as I was getting back to, as far as this resolution, is to talk about the key dates in terms of where we're at, you know, today as far as having this meeting and talking about it. Terms of establishing uh the tax rates and the budget uh adoption deadlines and the um the overall budget adoption plan. And as you can see between here, April twentieth and April, I mean in May uh eighteen, uh time is very short. And it is of the essence uh for us to be able to have our meetings with the folks who are going to be impacted um through uh these budget uh issues uh that we're actually, that we're facing. Uh so, you know, I want to make sure uh that we are utilizing all the time that we have in between uh those two dates, but keep in mind uh we do um uh have to uh this is my train of thought right here. We have to advertise uh for our uh April, I mean for our May eighteenth uh meeting. Um to have that public hearing on the budget and have the first reading. Um so we want to kind of get everything basically done in between that timeline between April twentieth, I think uh uh May is it tenth? Not mistaking uh as far as our advertising timeframe. Um you correct me if I'm wrong, uh my folks uh from the budget team. Uh but uh, you know, we want to make sure we have that, but also too, if there's any amendments between uh the eighteenth and the first, we would like to get that prior to uh well, a week uh prior to uh June first, uh so we can make those necessary changes into the amendments, different things like that uh from the council. Um so, uh that's our overall uh plan uh for adopting the budget in terms of where we at uh with our financials. And uh if you have any questions pertaining to our overall budget, uh I can answer those as well as staff.
Are there any um questions?
Um, I think it's helpful just to kind of discuss openly uh what the process is from here, once we kind of, you know, kind of get behind the strategy around what that total budget number looks like, how do we then move forward and work with the departments to understand like what priorities we have internally as well as obviously schools is another big bucket that um that's going to have to be filled. So Dr. Richardson, could you just take the public through what those next steps looks like between now and when we convene again?
Yes, uh what we have to do is basically start scheduling uh meetings uh right away. Terms with the district and terms are with our departments to talk about the overall expenditures.
You put your microphone next to your mouth. I know it's hard.
Wasn't too loud. Okay, um can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that uh we uh uh start these meetings right away in terms of not only meeting with the district, but also too uh with our uh personnel to talk about the impact that uh this budget uh that we're proposing uh will have on their departments. Uh and that's also too, uh you know, uh a key discussion I'll be having uh with uh Dr. Atkins uh in the uh in the district uh about uh our overall finances that we're going to be providing them. So between now and next week, uh we will be getting with the council uh as well as with uh Dr. Atkins, which you can schedule with the school board. So we can have those collective meetings to talk about the impact uh that the budget will have uh on uh each uh area.
And do you have any um updated information from the schools yet?
No, I I don't at this point. Uh we've been in preliminary discussions and I know that she's been uh working uh on uh her budget. As it relates to the, to the district. Um but as I said before, I didn't want to move too fast and not have things in place uh for tonight and uh be able to tell them the wrong information. So uh we will be on the phone, I think in the morning, to be able to do that as well as setting up uh meetings uh with our different departments, to be able to talk about, as I mentioned, the impact that it'll have on them in terms of the uh reduced expenditures uh for uh FY twenty one.
And well, um just with the dates that were presented, um as June first being presented as budget approval. Mr. Blair, do we need to have um at least two public hearings for um on the budget?
Sorry, I was on mute. Um actually, the code only requires one public hearing for the budget. However, the Virginia code does require that uh there is a time period that must pass between the public hearing for the budget, I believe it's seven days, and then the council's adoption of the budget.
Okay.
I I'm sorry, I just want more clarification around. So right now, tonight, we're discussing kind of the overall budget amounts um holding steady from fiscal year twenty. But as you move on to these conversations within departments and obviously with the schools, there's still some prioritization that's going to happen within that budget limit. I'm just trying to understand, we're not, we haven't gotten to that granularity of the council yet, and so I guess is this our opportunity to kind of share where our priorities might be? To give you further guidance, because right now, even if we just say that, yeah, holding flat to twenty twenty, you know, it's just still a pretty general thing to be saying, um especially.
I would say yes, uh provide us uh with uh your uh, you know, your recommendations. Uh because what we're trying to do is be able to move forward. As I said, you know, our time is very limited in terms of what we can and can't do uh based upon, you know, our uh legal obligations. Um so uh we would like to know that.
Go ahead, Nakia, sorry.
I think what's helpful in that is the two two ones that um I requested that we have with the department heads and with Dr. Atkins. I think that that will help us um have a better understanding uh where um we are internally and what the schools' needs are. And if we all have a quick, like, these are, would be my top three list, I guess we could give them, but also know that um any time that we get that new information that we usually um, you know, change course um to. So um I just think that if we can get those two two ones scheduled at least this week um and determine what we need a work session on um other than the vibrant community fund, and then we definitely need to set up. Um and hopefully they'll, staff will be getting that information in from the nonprofit agencies about what their current structure during this time looks like and what their needs are, if they're still the same or if they're greater. So we can have that information to evaluate during that process um too.
And Nakia, to that end, I think we should probably have either staff or one of us kind of represent that this, what we're, what we're looking at with the vibrant communities fund, because as I've acknowledged to several people I've responded to today, the little confusion that we didn't zero out that funding for all nonprofits, it's just that we're putting it in a holding place while we assess where those dollars are going to be most effectively spent in the short term. And so I know that's a process that I think that that the community is eager to understand a little better. So is that something we want staff to speak to or should we speak to further?
Sure, and I had a quick um midday Facebook live after we kept getting the emails and Facebook messages in to just say that's what we um were planning to do. So council, the only agreement that council has made at this time is that we don't have enough information to make um a decision about where the two million dollars for the vibrant community fund um will go. And so we plan to leave our staff to communicate um with the nonprofit agencies and just get uh narrative, um you know, response to give to us just where you are as an organization, what it looks like moving forward for you in COVID nineteen. If you don't need the um resources that you had applied for, um then let us know that if you still need them and let us know that and just uh, you know, let us know why. And um and that's what we'll be basing, um you know, our decisions or attempting to. And we understand that everyone's need is great, everyone is trying to keep their staff um, you know, employed so that they can serve the community. So we you know, acknowledge that, but we just wanted to get a little bit more time to um review some updated information. The original plan to go back to like twenty twenty numbers in this case didn't work because we attempted to revise the, from move from ABRT, the vibrant community fund, and there was a revision in the process. And um so simply going back to fiscal year twenty numbers wouldn't have worked in this case. And then we also acknowledge as a council that um the needs of the community are shifting and what um we may be funding um is different. And so we didn't want to make those decisions without giving the nonprofits uh opportunity to um share some new information. We didn't just want to assume that we knew how your agency was functioning in this um during this time. We wanted to give you an opportunity to um provide some information.
Yeah, so just like you, I'm I'm sorry, uh just like you said, uh uh mayor, as well as Councilwoman Hill, um we are, uh and that is our plan in terms of having the two two ones uh with the council to be able to get a better understanding and so we can move forward uh as um expeditiously as possible. But also too, uh using great caution in terms of how we go about funding uh the various departments, because we know as we, as we talked about before, that some departments will be impacted more than others and some departments had things that they just had to uh, you know, that they need in terms of expenditures more than other departments. So we'll be able to better evaluate that as we move forward uh about this process in the next few weeks, but you know, this is going to be a lot of work, uh a lot of time, energy put into this because it's, you know, it's a big turnaround. But I think that, uh you know, the plan that we have in place uh will get us there as well as, you know, being able to look at uh overall uh revenue that's coming in uh throughout the uh period of time, you know, from now until we be able, we're able to look at it in terms of our amendments. And then come back to the council throughout our, you know, discussions overall and up to our monthly meetings as well as updates uh throughout the coming weeks uh to talk about that as well as uh looking at uh ways that we can uh, you know, uh uh prioritize the areas where we want to put money back to if our revenue outlook uh uh improves uh much sooner than what we think. Uh but, you know, as I said before, you know, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a, uh it's going to be, you know, a a tall order in terms of what we do and how we do it because of the current economic conditions. But uh, you know, if things do go in a different direction, we also have a plan for that in place too, uh that we will share with the council. And that plan pertains to if the university, as I mentioned in my uh presentation, if they don't come back, you know, the impact that it'll have uh on uh the city in terms of our overall revenues.
Can you just speak to what that amendment process will look like? So obviously, we have a tight timeline right now to get to a budget that we can approve, but then once we get past approved budget, which is not normal, that we would go back and revisit that. What does that amendment process look like and how flexible is that, just so the public can understand that a little better?
What it is, is basically looking at uh how our revenues come in, uh once we look at it and uh be able to do the amendment. Basically, what you're doing is you're amending the budget to be able to put money back into your overall uh general fund. Uh for uh, you know, for the revenue that's coming in, and you're basically looking at adjustment in terms of, you know, uh the uh increase to the overall, to the overall budget. Or do we go in a different direction if the amendments, that we have to amend it again to reduce uh the overall uh budget? But as I mentioned before, the council has the opportunity to, you know, um prioritize and look at, you know, what are the key things that you want to do first in terms of those amendments, you know? Is it for personnel? Is it for education? You know, is it for different things that you want to do if we are seeing an increase in revenues?
And then my, the other topic that's come up from some folks is the CIP itself. So right now, we haven't talked a lot about our CIP. We've stated that obviously there's a portion of that that we're going to be kind of holding um as kind of a backup source um for additional funding. Um but can you talk to what the process looks like for how we're going to prioritize our CIP in this next fiscal year and what actually is frozen and what will still kind of be moving on as 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 planned?
I'm gonna turn that over to the person that handles that. Uh Chrissy, are you online?
Hi, I am. So we are um still looking at that part of the CIP and figuring out what else we need to do and how that will work exactly. One of the things that we've put um in front of you in terms of the expenditures, as you know, was the seven million dollars that was to be transferred to the CIP. We have put that into a citywide reserve to help offset any other potential revenue losses or estimations that may or may not be correct. So at this point, um there would be no cash going to the CIP in FY twenty one. What would be left to be decided would then be um looking at the projects that were perhaps uh bondable to determine if we still wanted to keep all of those in. The propose, original proposed copy of the CIP that um you were given in March had projects that exceeded the potential bond sale by just under, I think, four million dollars. So even the, you know, if we just go with the uh bonded projects, we'll need to be looking um to make some sort of concession about what or would not be moving forward um for bondable projects.
Thank you.
And so um and just for um the public to know, so for projects that were funded out of this current budget like the housing projects for, and I know CRHA is um a bondable project, but PHA was not. If they are ready to move forward um without, if they are able to move forward during this time, is that money still in place or is that a part of the discussion points that we would need to have?
So anything in this year's CIP moving backwards um is technically already funded. Um part of the problem we were looking at a couple of weeks ago that I think we spoke to council about was the fact that the, there was just no bond market, so um going to the market to sell bonds, um had we, we had planned to actually do a sale this spring. Um and so we had to pull that back. Um but that seemed, there are some sales that are starting to happen, so that has um, that problem seems to be getting a little bit better. Um but so anything that's in this year's CIP or backwards is still funded. Um you know, we are trying to make decisions in terms of what is essential and non-essential just because of where we are and what's happening right now to just make sure we're sort of taking a pause to make sure that um, you know, we, we can afford to do these things and not need to make up somewhere else. But they should not, to your point, those projects should technically not be impacted.
Okay. But any future dollars that were coming out of this year or um future phases or whatever, that would be um problematic at this point?
Correct. And one other thing is, um we have a lot of big projects in the CIP that are funded um by federal and state dollars, and it's unclear at this point in terms of um what the state budget will look like um or if any of those dollars will be impacted. So we are working now um both, you know, regionally with other localities to figure out what they're doing and also trying to get some information from the state to find out what impacts um those projects may have based on that funding.
Okay. Thank you. And so I, I, you know, um to, you know, Councilor Hill was making a point, I didn't know if you all wanted to um you know, just say as of this date, um if you have a top three priorities, if you want to share that, if you want to wait for the two two ones um and share that, um if there's any member of council who feels comfortable at this time, then I think this would be that time, or if you want to wait until our next meeting, um or during the two two one meeting. So I'll just say for, from my standpoint, that, you know, I think making sure um that um, you know, the community members that, you know, the community members who are most vulnerable and the wide spectrum that that will do, that we make sure that we are making the best decisions internally to make sure that we don't let them, you know, fall through the cracks or suffer any more than they've already been suffering would be my first priority. The next priority for me would be, you know, employees and understanding just the, the state of laying off or at this point that we would have to make that up in, you know, another area. And the same would be for the school system to make sure that whatever needs that they have, that we are listening to those needs and making sure that our school staff from, you know, teachers to janitorial staff and nutrition workers who've been with the city for years, that they are not, you know, laid off during, you know, this time. And so if I had to jump into a top three right now, those would be mine.
Mayor Walker, I'll just follow up because that had my list and that's very consistent with where I'm coming from. Certainly looking at our most vulnerable community members. And I kind of put our employees and the schools employees into one bucket at this point because we should be consistent across the board. Obviously as a council, we don't decide how schools funding goes. But as a parent of three kids under 10 right now, I can tell you that our school is coming back as strong as they possibly can as a top priority for many parents throughout this, this community. And we need to be recognizing the value that that group of folks that is so committed is providing to our community and will be through this recovery, obviously in addition to our own staff. And so those are certainly, what you've just stated is much aligned with where I'm coming from.
And that's not, I mean, there was that, you know, I'm on the minority business task force. I understand the business community impact. I was on a call with Elizabeth Cromwell from the Chamber of Commerce. So I understand the business needs. I've talked to Chris Eagle and Holly Lee. And we understand for the, that for the community to recover from this, that businesses will have to be intact and especially for those small business owners who have committed, you know, had made a commitment to this community that we, as that information comes in, you know, to us, we are figuring out how to also, you know, to get the business community needs met. And from everything I'm seeing and reading, it is very, you know, it's unlikely that the students will be back in August. And just, I just think having those upfront, you know, conversations as quickly as possible and looking at the potential impact and trying to figure out how we can avoid the worst case scenario is in all of our best interests. We have an economy that's built off of the university and tourism and we're going to have neither of those things. And so we're going to have to make sure that we're making the right decisions, that everyone is, you know, sharing what their needs are and able to look at the whole picture at the same time and not request or ask for more than anyone needs if we're going to keep everyone as stable as possible during, during this time.
No, and I agree. And I, I mean, I certainly feel like the, the businesses are like foundational and like they're that getting them recovered is going to be foundational to us, funding all of these priorities that we're discussing. And so, I mean, at the appropriate time, I think it's important for council to consider how some of those revenues might be diverted to helping with that recovery, obviously with the TOT, the Transit and Auctions Tax. That's like a delayed route. So what we're feeling right now that the CACDB will feel that, the Visitors Bureau will feel that down the road because it's all based on the current revenues that we're getting. But I think it is going to be important for us to kind of really look hard at like what, what resources can we provide to those industries? Because if they're not successful, we're not able to allocate the funding we want to these priorities. And how do we partner with them and understand how we locally can, how do we advocate for that kind of support beyond obviously the local level? We're, we're limited to what we can do as a locality. Given, you know, our budget amounts are not going to be able to, to be able to recover this local economy on its own. But one of the biggest things, and I've brought this up in an email today, was like, what are we doing as proactively as possible as an organization to make sure that when it's opportunities to take advantage of grants or funding that's coming up stimulus packages, like what are we doing to make sure that we're best prepared to be in a position to get those dollars from other sources? And so I just think it's a really important thing that we need to be looking at collectively with staff.
Yeah, I think that's of paramount importance. As you can see, as we brought here tonight, even CAT has gone out to, you know, look for grants and different things like that. And I know various other departments are doing the same thing. And they understand the importance of that because of our overall, because of our overall situation we're in at this present time, dealing with this crisis.
Are there any other comments?
I mean, I guess it just sort of a high level, I guess, three priorities are definitely affordable housing and within the CIP budget, trying to maintain those commitments, especially where there may potentially be impacts on low income housing tax credit applications or other outside sources of funding for some of these projects as well as trying to, you know, I'm definitely curious what the state of the money allocated to the CAF is slash will be and what the state of that RFP process for allocating some of that money will be. Second, as others mentioned, I think trying to as much as possible, keep the city's workforce employed. I think we're the, what is it, third largest employer, some, we're up there somewhere. So I think, you know, the impacts, you know, our workforce being able to maintain their payroll definitely has an impact in terms of the community's needs and people's ability to afford rent and other basic needs. And third, just kind of some of those emergency frontline needs in terms of food security homelessness. You know, thinking about like the, the emergency relief fund we have and our partnerships with Pacham, it's the Food Justice Network and Food Banks. Particularly, you know, if we see, you know, less optimistic scenario unfold where we're still in a similar position in terms of economic impacts, you know, two, three months from now in terms of just priorities. I have a question in terms of the, there's the May 18th and June 1st dates. I know, I know it's extremely difficult, both because of the tight timeline and the fact that, you know, there, we have to do social distancing. But are there any sort of work sessions or sort of community input sessions or anything beyond those two dates? I think obviously just because of the amount of cuts there are and the amount of uncertainty, it's just going to be really important to really have public communication with the public and have their input just because of the difficulty of some of the trade offs that will, there will be.
And that's the overall game plan in terms of having those community meetings and discussions as well as with the two two one with the council. You know, with staff as well as with, you know, the, the district in terms of being able to have those discussions. Like I said before, you know, it's going to be a lot of work and a lot of time and energy put into this. But I think we can get it done and try to, you know, prioritize and strategically plan how we want to move forward in terms of our overall expenditures for FY21.
So to Counselor Payne's point around the CAF, I mean, council, I think we've just had some email exchanges, but I think it's important for us to talk about it publicly. We've kind of decided that we're going to hold those dollars. Obviously we had some dollars that were coming back from our original allocations because one project didn't go through. In addition, we had surplus dollars from last fiscal year that we allocated to get the CAF up to the 1.5. Those haven't been basically allocated at this point. And then obviously whatever comes into this next fiscal year. What I've heard from our, just our one-on-one exchanges is that we want to kind of hold that in a pot as we kind of start to get a better picture for what the most immediate needs are relative to housing and are going to meet, meet the greatest need of the most members of the community versus going through a more traditional allocation process. But I'm curious of folks' thoughts on what that might look like and the committee that might be formed to evaluate that because we were going through a lot of changes with our Housing Advisory Committee at the time when all of this was kind of unfolding. So I just wanted to see if there was thoughts on that.
From my perspective, you know, the conversations that we had, were having around hack, I think we still need to continue, you know, those. While at the same time, you know, if any citizen, including members who were on the hack, if they have information that they feel like would, we need to make a decision that they can submit that for us, you know, to think about. And that's in any area. We're going to get, you know, a lot of information from the nonprofit communities. But I think we definitely need to be looking at any dollars we spend holistically and making sure that they're going to have an impact. And looking at this long term, if we are, you know, a semester or two without, you know, students, if we're going through this, you know, spring, summer season where we have everything from weddings, you know, regular tourism to graduations and things like that, and that, those dollars are not going to come in this time, then I think people will understand those priorities. Because if we aren't very strategic with this funding, we're going to get to a point where there is no funding to be strategic about. And so we need to treat every dollar as if it's the last possible dollar, because it could be. And we need to make sure that it makes the most, you know, impact and that will have the, you know, greatest reach and, you know, extend, you know, for as long as possible because we don't know how long that will be in this crunch.
Well, I know, I think just realistically, you know, the, during this period, you know, we're not going to see the Planning Commission visit, you know, those recommended changes to the hack and get to a point where, you know, that is finalized. You know, I think just for reasons as simple as the fact that, you know, we can't meet electronically about that if it's not directly related to, you know, the pandemic response. But it's definitely, you know, a longer term conversation that's always there. I mean, I know Mr. Collins and, and Public Comment brought up, you know, the hack potentially coming together to discuss emergency response. I mean, to me, that seems like a good avenue to not say that like what they discuss or say is final by any means, but as a way to sort of kickstart that conversation and maybe brainstorm some of these potential different uses of money in, in the hack or, or not the hack, money in the CAF and coordination among our housing, uh, housing providers. Again, to just sort of kickstart that conversation and see if they have any ideas. I mean, that to me seems like a natural entry point for that kind of discussion. And I do think both with this as well as the Vibrant Communities Fund, I think we, we also just need to be realistic about what is feasible in terms of changes to the process and changes to how decisions on what gets allocated get made. Because I think there's just going to be some real limitations in terms of the timeline we have for, say, developing like a total, like if with the Vibrant Communities Fund, I really just don't know what that process could look like. You know, if in terms of, you know, developing, you know, if we develop different priorities, does that mean that there's applications from the nonprofits? There's a different scoring system? Is it decisions that city staff or city council just sort of makes holistically without any rubric? I just think we need to be realistic about what's feasible in terms of trying to change processes in that kind of way.
Yeah, and I agree that we won't be able to put a lot of the processes that needs to change in place. But I am not going to, you know, not acknowledge the comments that I've made in the past about how some of these processes were just wrong and they were not serving the greater good. And that doesn't change because we're in a pandemic. And we have to be more strategic and more holistic, you know, you know, with the funds. And so I, while, and that's why I asked Mr. Blair the question. I'm not going to vote to have hack convene. But as he said, if they want to meet, they can meet. And I always read what I receive from them. But I hope that we are also understanding that that's just one avenue of information. Just like we're going to get these updated narratives from the nonprofit community. And just like all of us have our list of what we think is the top priority, everyone else will too. And we'll have to evaluate that to the best of our ability based on the, you know, the information that, that we get. But I think it's important to allow them to weigh in, the nonprofit community. And that's why I have asked, that's why I asked staff to get that information from them without us just going through and assuming that we know what they are doing during this time.
Yeah, I think there was definitely a shared perspective from other counselors based on my two two ones is that we wanted to have an opportunity for the nonprofits to respond and try to make it as streamlined as possible, but that, so that we're not placing any assumptions on this process.
All right, is there any other discussion?
Madam Mayor, I wanted to just offer a couple of thoughts on sort of my priorities. A lot of this, of course, is going to depend on funding decisions that are still being made in Washington. We've got, and we know there's another bill that's being hashed out right now that rumor has it may include some assistance for local governments, who knows? We also know that there's, for example, there is one check that has already been determined that we would be getting, I think it's $269,000 in new CBG funding specifically for things that pertain to dealing with the COVID virus. One thing that we need to do, obviously as a council, that's what you were asking for comments on, is to decide what, what our priorities are for spending. The, I'll, I'll sort of lump things together a little bit, the roughly $2.2 million that we had set aside in either vibrant community funds or education and arts support funds, however much money we think we may be able to get from other sources. For example, if we decide not to spend the, the money that's allocated for the capital improvement fund, the $7 million roughly coming from the, the general fund to the capital improvement fund. If we want to take some of that, apply that, or we want to take some of the money as Counselor Hill was referencing earlier, from other appropriations that we're not going to be making. We need to figure out how much money we're going to have for those kinds of purposes. And when we do, to me, the first priorities are to make sure that people are fed, that they have medical care available and that they have housing. And short-term critical needs will be more important in this respect than long-term needs. Something that gives us housing five years from now or three years from now is less important to me at this moment than something that, an expenditure that might help keep people in their houses right now during this crisis time. So those three major priorities, food, medical care, housing. We also hear anecdotally that domestic abuse is up in the last month, and at least it's been reported so over in the valley. It stands to reason that as stresses mount in the family, domestic abuse will rise. So organizations that deal with domestic abuse and families in crisis are going to be important here. And certainly people have been making the argument to me that these are just as much health issues as what might happen at a medical clinic, for example. So other top or near top priorities would include programs like the Boys and Girls Club or the YMCA or the things that would help keep kids busy in socially productive ways. And my preferred model at the moment, and this is something that I haven't, you know, I, I, I like the metaphor of holding on to an idea lightly. You know, I I like the metaphor of holding on to an idea lightly. Because it's subject to change. Is to put the word out that we're looking for funding for we're looking to fund specific things. Aligned with those priorities rather than just say as we in essence did in the vibrant communities fund. Here's another forty thousand dollars to do more of what you did last year, and it may be that there's some things that we want done differently this year. That may mean that some programs at some agencies that we've been funding for years may need to be reoriented. Or it may mean that we fund again programs we have long supported with a renewed sense of how they fit into a broader picture. In twenty twenty, I don't envision this rethinking as happening in a vacuum, I envisioning, I am envisioning it. As being a wide ranging process, including the city staff, county staff, as well as nonprofits themselves. I also don't envision it as being over by June thirtieth. Number one, because we'll have to adjust to constantly changing economic conditions. Number two, because how we perceive the needs may be different in July than they than it is in May. So it's a it's a long process, it's a difficult process, but those are my basic priorities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McGill, are you there?
I am, and I was just going to speak up. Definitely, as far as priorities go. Keeping our most vulnerable community as safe as possible. Just because our most vulnerable community is already stretched with its resources. Additionally, I'm I'm very concerned about. Kids who. Need some sort of normalcy in their life as well as keeping up with school and staying in some sort of regularity. And additionally about our city employees. I'd say those are my three top priorities.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Snook brought up the additional money coming in through C D B G. That's definitely something I'm I'm interested in trying to figure out, you know, if there's any. Ideas or plan for how that additional money may get spent, my understanding is that it can spread pretty broadly on COVID nineteen response. I know there's community members who have sort of informally discussed if there are ways to use that related to homelessness services. And definitely would be interesting hearing from John Sales or. You know, if the hack comes together again, if they're just even just brainstorming it, you know, if there's any. Strategy for how that additional money could be used strategically. And I think I think we're all on the same page with this, but obviously I think the, you know, with all these, you know, part. It's not just a city thing, you know, it's a regional thing, a lot of people accessing these resources are going to go back and forth across the county and city line. And really coordinating with the county, Alamo County and maybe even other surrounding localities. Especially if this, you know, continues on long term, I mean, I know city staff is already doing that and. I want to be more proactive in trying to reach out to board supervisors, members. Because I think, you know, again, with like homeless and services like that's going to be. To spend our money most effectively, we're going to have to, I think, try to coordinate some more responses and investments between the city and county.
All right, any other comments? Questions?
My final comment, I think. Just to the community, I think it's important to recognize that these numbers are still really uncertain, there's a lot of uncertainty. The revenue picture could get better, but it could also get substantially worse, I'm sure people have seen the news today about. Oil prices and some of the GDP projections, you know, over the next few quarters. You know, we could see the revenue gap grow substantially larger and. There's going to be very difficult decisions to make and we're not going to be able to avoid trade offs. And I think it's just going to be really important for the community to really be a part of that process and understand exactly what the budget situation is. And understand what the trade offs in front of us are, so they understand and have some understanding and input over the decisions. That we will make because no matter what, they're going to be very difficult and tough. And it's definitely going to be, you know, across the country, you know, a period of sacrifice across the board. And again, you know, the frustrating thing always is is, you know, our budget is around a hundred ninety million dollars, we cannot run deficits, we have to balance it. It's not like the federal government where we've got a central bank and we can, you know. Run up how much. Print money. And we just don't have.
Increasing taxes.
Yeah, I mean, you know, but we just we just don't have the resources locally to meet every need there is. And that's just why we continue, need to continue to advocate for action at the state and federal level. And really be strategic about partnering with mutual aid work going on in the community to make this a whole community wide response. Not just the city operating in a silo.
But but I think the budget numbers that you're talking about with the general fund and then, you know, depending on what the decisions are made around the C I P. That, you know, that looking at it instead of two separate, you know, looking at it holistically will help us. You know, to and especially once we figure out for those major projects. If we are continuing, if we're still going to receive state and federal dollars, if we're going to receive them now or at a later date. I mean, I think once we have just more information about everything that we'll be able to make. You know, better to better noun decisions which as rapidly as things are changing, we will make. You know, feel very differently just a week away and we, you know, we may not even be talking about months. All right, was, so are there any other comments? No, all right, so there's a, is there a motion?
My move, we adopt a resolution establishing a plan for city council to adopt a budget for the fiscal year twenty 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 one.
Is there a second?
A second.
And the only thing I want to point out again is that. You know, we understand that we are having to amend things that we're still providing. We're getting input from departments, from nonprofits, from citizens. And that that we know that none of this is final at this at this point. Any other comments?
Out of the inputs list, schools, any inputs from the schools?
Yes. All right. All in favor? All right, so that carries five to zero. I know there was amendment to the budget. For item six at the beginning of the meeting.
I think if only anything that we could just agree as a council on what type of information we want staff to bring forward during future council meetings would just be helpful. Like what level of detail we want, how many, like, do we want staff to be presenting, presenting, just so we can all get alignment publicly right now. So the public knows what to expect in a couple of weeks when we come back.
Yes, with limited opportunities to get in front of people and we want to make sure that staff. That they're not to get in front of cameras, you know, in a traditional way either. That having the updates from. Key, you know, leaders would. Be vital, you know, to the community understanding, you know, what's going on. But also want to, you know, make sure that the Seville three sixty and as many people who can watch that. And it's streamed on social media channels too. Know that we have attempted to get information out in that way, but I think that during the council meeting, just having maybe. A COVID nineteen response and even if we did, you know. I don't know, because I think there's things that are essential right now.
Yeah, and that was the the ultimate plan that we were coming out of this with was that we were going to provide those updates at the city council meeting. About COVID nineteen as well as continue to do what we've been doing on Seville three sixty. In terms of putting our different departments. On different. Different discussions and talking about different things that are going on with COVID. As well as some of our overall operations in the city and how we're conducting our day to day business. We will have that and as I mentioned before, you know, the the questions that we get from the council, a lot of times. We'll be able to develop, you know, some type of, you know, we'll be able to develop a number of answers to those questions and then provide that to the public.
And I and I do know that this has been discussed on one of the three sixties and Mr. Blair and I have talked about this offline, but. I think it would be helpful just to kind of clarify for the public where we stand relative to land use decision making. In this emergency situation, so is that something that Mr. Blair or Dr. Richardson you can you can address?
Yes, we we actually had that, what, last week, we had N D S folks on there. And then also from the questions that came out of that in terms of what are we trying to do to try to help? The the development community and we will have them come back on to address those things that they're planning to do. To be able to, you know, keep things going in terms of our development in the city.
From a policy, from a procedural standpoint, we've, the city has taken the position that. Land use decisions in general are not considered for for new new decision making, it's not part of the emergency, is that right, Mr. Blair?
Yes, the idea of a discretionary legislative act. Based on the emergency ordinance adopted by council on March the twenty fifth would not be. Covered by that ordinance or. The authority that flows from that ordinance, again, that's because. These are, you know, a rezoning or a special use permit is a discretionary legislative act. The Attorney General's opinion that was issued earlier this year, which talked about emergency ordinances. It it really. In my opinion, it's sort of limited what boards and councils can do in terms of. Purely discretionary activity, I mean, the Attorney General's opinion seemed to focus a lot more on the emergency. Nature of what was going on and the essential functions of government. But as Dr. Richardson stated, there will probably be a presentation by N D S and the development staff of the city at. One of the updates about COVID.
Thank you.
And I imagine that the longer we're in this. At the state and federal level, they all have to relax some more, you know, be more relaxed with the rules and more flexible. And, you know, we should expect if we're in this for a longer period, some of that guidance. Because we will have to discuss more than emergency related things if we are still dealing with this in, you know, six to twelve months.
And also, there's a plenty of land use issues that are still being handled through N D S that don't have to come before council, correct?
Correct. But Mayor Walker, to your point. I think it is important to note that I I agree that the Attorney General's opinion talked about essential functions. I think that, you know, we're approximately one month into the social distancing executive orders by the government. I think if we get into June and July and there are still social distancing requirements. That the council is is meeting and and also that the governor is continuing to enact. I think that the definition of essential function starts to turn, you know, you go from. I consider things like budgetary matters, things that absolutely have to immediately be addressed. By the city council as the essential functions right now. But it's probably fair to say that. In, you know, when you're talking months down the road, July, August. Essential functions do start to become looking more and more like other functions besides just purely budgetary. And appropriation matters.
All right, are there any other questions?
No, ma'am.
Mayor, could I make one point about the budget? You you and the other counselors have mentioned the amendment process and let's keep our fingers crossed. And let's say that the revenues are better than expected. You know, when there are budget amendments. I know this council values public participation and let's say that. The revenues come in greater than one percent of what's been projected and and the council wishes to. Expend those funds, then Virginia Code section fifteen point two dash twenty five oh seven. Requires a public hearing for the expenditure of funds greater than one percent of the general budget, so. If you do go through that amendment process to the good side. You will have an opportunity to have a public hearing and and more public input in how to expend those funds.
All the optimism.
But I think either way, we need to be as, you know, open to the, you know, transparent as possible. Which is transparent. To the public on how we're making decisions and why, because they're going to know anyway, and so we need to just have. Those discussions openly.
The only thing I would add, Dr. Richardson, for the COVID updates is I think that it's just important just because we've heard from a few folks, but I just, just to reiterate. And just to be displaying like how much we are working on some of these issues regionally, this is not a city issue, it's not a county issue, it's not a university issue. And surrounding counties, but there's so much really great collaboration going on regionally that I think it's great for us to share with the public when we can reconvene.
That's right.
Yeah, and I, one more comment about the expectation from the public, we are trying to stay alive as well. Even though we've been elected and we are, you know, public servants and. One thing that I've been stressing since the very first conversation is making sure that we understand that we have to respond. To this virus very differently than we would have responded to. A August twenty eighteen or, you know, anniversary year of that and so. This is new to all of us and so we understand that normally, you know, the for those members of council that. Or staff that talk to the press that you have been able to just jump in front of a camera. And that's different now and some of the comments that I have been. Hearing like where are you all and we've been making every effort to make sure that we get. Information in front of you from our own personal efforts to, I think, really. You know, great efforts from our communications team to make sure that there are. You know, the Shaw slow three sixty is on media streams and on our access channel. And I just think it's important to also make sure that you are chiming in and understanding that through all the stress. That everyone may be missing something, but we are working and. Even with working from home, I wasn't able to celebrate my son's birthday until the day after. Because we were working on budget stuff, so we're busy and. You know, we are trying to make sure that things are in place and staff is working really hard and some of them. Are frontline out in public. And also trying to figure out how to continue to do their jobs and make sure they're not exposing their family, so. This is different and just asking again for that compassion and grace that I asked for earlier.
Mayor Walker, I'd like to also just take this moment to send out a thank you to our staff. Who have been working so hard and many are. Who have been working so hard and many are working weekends and abnormal hours right now trying to support the community the best they can.
Yeah. We're so grateful for for you all.
Thank you.
And in addition to that, I'm giving a shout out to those teachers because they're the only thing getting me through every day right now. I talked to three of them personally today, so thank you to all our teachers and our education staff.
And I do, I want to say as well, I mean, I get, people reach out to me, either elected officials or community members in other localities, asking about some of the things that we've been doing here in Charlottesville, both at a local government level and at a community level in terms of initiatives like equip Seaville and support Seaville dot com. And I think both our community and our city staff have really been uh state leaders in doing everything that's possible at a municipal level to address this issue. And there's always a lot more to do and there's always a lot more that has to be done that's beyond the municipal level. But I think, you know, that the the work that's been done really is making a difference. And I think that we can say, you know, when we look back on it, has saved lives as well.
Yes.
And please wear your masks in public. And stay home when you can.
Stay home sometime even when you can't think you can't. Stay home as much as possible.
And I want to give the I want to give the community credit because like, you know, we have to kind of look at the broader scheme. I mean, we still have relatively few cases and we just have to thank the community for your, the responsibility that you're taking to minimize interactions with others in the community. And it's hard for all of us, we're social beings. But I think we should be, you all should be committed as a community for all that you've done to keep our numbers in the city and in the surrounding region down. So thank you.
And I'll just add time into that, you know, we really appreciate all the efforts that people are making, but we also want to make sure that people understand that there has been limited testing done in the community. And so the asymptomatic part of this virus that we really don't understand is critical for us to just from keeping the back of our minds. And I posted over the weekend a um article from Boston and it was at a shelter for individuals experiencing homelessness and of, you know, almost 400 people tested, 146 were positive with and positive and asymptomatic. And that's one thing I think we just really need to make sure that, you know, we are communicating, you know, as well, while it may be perceived that the numbers are low, the fact that like the update we got received today, 222 people in the region. And we know how many of our employees work outside in the surrounding counties and how many people are driving in from the surrounding counties to work at our stores and, you know, things like that. That we have to look at. And that's just five counties and they are regions that connect, you know, like Louisa Orange is right next door, right? And so understanding that while those numbers may not be, that a lot of people are you know, possibly, you know, positive that we don't know about. And so hopefully they're not, but since we don't know, it's just the social distancing and staying away until we figure out and get more information about this virus. Okay, so I think now, unless there's any other comments, we're at general business. Other business, any other business here? No? Okay. So now we'll open up the matters by the public.
And Mayor Walker, if you don't mind, there's a couple of questions that came in earlier.
Okay.
I want to make sure that we just cover them. I'll just read them off. Can council clarify which taxes, bills and fees are suspended just delayed? So I believe that right now we just have delays on all those things with an interest in people sharing their plans for if they need additional time. Is that right? Is that what I, I think I heard?
Yes.
Being suspended fully. Okay.
No.
Heard of anything being sus- uh suspended.
I I can weigh in on that, guys, if you want.
Yeah.
Basically, since the city manager declared the state of emergency, all local taxes. Well, the treasurer and I, to the degree that I can, are going to be waiving penalty and interest until May 31st. That applies to all local taxes. So essentially, the clock's going to stop between March 12th and May 31st. That applies to anything. And then the, of course, what you voted on tonight was an actual extension of the new date. That's for real estate and personal property.
Thank you. And the only other question that came up and it looks like it's been pushed off, but um relative to the advisory committees, Mr. Blair, wouldn't every advisory committee be able to meet based upon the significant impact of this on every activity? Or how directly related would it have to be? I think we did address this later with my question around the land use, but do you mind just kind of addressing that? Like, just how tightly we're going to that definition?
And could I just also ask a, or make a comment before you? I also want to make sure that we're, that people understand that we are asking them to have these meetings virtually if they do convene meetings and that we do that because we don't want people in in the rooms together, right? And that it's and that it's COVID at this point, 19 related.
And it also still has to be advertised normally.
Correct.
And then the public engagement part and just to know that all of that stuff needs to be considered. And and if they need our resources, then there that needs to be a discussion with the communications team and Dr. Richardson about the capacity there, right?
Yes. Um I think it's to address that question, Ms. Counselor Hill. The emergency ordinance, the purpose of it was exactly as Mayor Walker stated. It waives FOIA's requirements for a physical form. And I, almost every jurisdiction in Virginia has passed some version of that. Um in terms of what can be discussed, right now, it again should be related. If if boards and commissions want to meet virtually, as Vice Mayor McGill stated, still the advertisement requirements of FOIA, which are a three-business-day notice for these meetings, have to be posted. And the meetings themselves should relate, and again, essential functions slash related to the emergency itself being the city manager's emergency declaration.
Okay. All right.
That's it for the questions that came in online.
All right. And now we'll open up the matters by the public.
If you're joining us via the webinar and you'd like to address council, you can raise your hand, clicking the raise your hand icon. We do have several people signing up, Mayor Walker. First, we have Walt Heinecke. Walt, you're on with city council. Go ahead.
Thanks. Um first of all, I just wanted to reiterate a great thanks to everyone, every, everything that you're all doing on council. I know that this is above and beyond the normal scope of your business and your duties. And also that extends to the staff. And I just have to say that I have a high level of confidence, knowing that the five of you are in charge and are looking out for us as a community. It makes me sleep better at night, so thank you for that. And I appreciate that. Um I wanted to just push back a little bit on this idea of the advisory committees meeting and specifically thinking about the hack. I know that there are issues with the hack and I think through discussions that were had prior, there were, there's sort of like two subgroups to the hack that were working and there were some issues that were brought up with one of the subgroups, but the other subgroup seemed to be working fine. And I just wanted to remind you all that the hack, at least the policy committee, seems to be a place where two things happen. One, it's a place where the community can weigh in on these issues and in a way that brings issues and ideas that are deliberated upon by people that you have trusted to be on the, on that advisory committee to distill, to distill those ideas and possible solutions as they come up in your direction. So I just wanted to reiterate that whatever, whatever part of the hack you all can agree is a positive thing for our community. I hope that you enable them to think about the COVID issues related to housing. As I was really happy to hear that most of, most all of you are basically saying that housing, health and food security are high on your levels of priorities moving forward with the budget. And I think that's really important. And I thank you for that. I also wanted to just throw out the idea of that the model of the hack being sort of a community-oriented advisory committee for housing. I'm curious if you've done similar things on health and on economic development. Because it seems like having a couple of advisory committees that are really focused in on health issues and economic issues that have you know, the opportunity for the community to weigh directly in. Think about things like a kitchen cabinet for you and, you know, people with subject matter expertise. Thinking about these issues in the context of community input, I think is a really important addition to sort of helping you all think through and address some of these issues. But thank you very much for everything you've done. I really appreciate it as a citizen in the community. And I think there's a lot of people out here that are really eager to support you.
Thank you.
Next, Mayor Walker, we have Tanisha Hudson. Tanisha, you're on with council. Go ahead. Go ahead, Tanisha. Yep. We we can hear you.
Okay. So, okay, so back to the gentleman with the taxes. He's saying that the taxes, hold on. He said the taxes would defer until May 31st. That doesn't make sense to me when we're on a shutdown until June the 10th. Not not defer, but they're waiving late payments and, you know, penalties and interest or whatever until May 31st. National, I mean, a government shutdown until June the 10th. So I think that should be discussed, to be pushed at least until Governor Northern makes a decision that what we're going to do beyond June the 10th at this point. Like, that just doesn't make sense to me that we're not matching up with the state at this point. Yeah, that, I'm I'm confused there. And also, I just want to thank you all for all your work. I mean, all of you are working really hard. You've gotten a break from me for a little while. But yeah, let there still needs to be some type of deferment program for businesses that aren't going to hire employees right away. Like, people aren't going to go right back to work. Students are already not coming back through summer classes. So you have airmark employees that's not going back to work through summer. I just think it's a lot of things that you guys need to really sit down and think about moving forward up until like fall. Like, it has to be, as I stated earlier, and I kind of been doing the work for y'all, calling and seeing what other, you know, people are doing. Like, there's like, there has to be some type of deferment program that you're offering to people beyond the date of the shutdown. Like, we can't just say the 31st of May and people still not going back to work until June the 10th. And we don't even know if they're going to go back June the 10th. Does that make sense to y'all? I'm done.
Micaiah, do you want to clarify the dates?
So what Todd just said, I, what I heard him say, and Todd, you can fill in, but that for right now, they have waived waived the interest and penalties till May 31st. And then in terms of the real estate taxes and personal property taxes due date, we have pushed those to the June 19th date. And we've also stated that people who may not be able to pay that we will, that staff will have conversations with them on an individual basis that they just need to call in and let us know what their circumstances are. Not every detail of their lives, but you know, just that they're experiencing hardship. And those penalties and fees are being waived for those individuals too.
I I can address some of this. The May 31st date, that was a date that we picked early on. You guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Yep. That was the day we picked early on. I mean, we could still revisit it. But the thing that you, I mean, we could revisit it later as we get closer to the end of the governor's shutdown period. But the thing that you got to remember is these taxes that most of the taxes this applies to are like your trust taxes, like meals tax and lodging tax. And you know, basically, when these businesses are not making money, they're not going to owe any tax, you know, if that makes sense. So I can't really defer. I mean, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to defer out a payment that doesn't, you know, that that is not going to get paid, if that, if you guys follow my reasoning. If they didn't collect any taxes in, you know, April or May, they're not going to owe any taxes on April or May. So it doesn't really make a lot of sense to push it out. But, you know, we can talk about it when we get to that, to that, closer to that point.
Those conversations, you know, based on, you know, businesses were asking for, well, what if they didn't have to pay, you know, the taxes? And we had the discussion around that, you know, when people make those purchases that they are understanding that they are paying the tax that that the businesses are holding to transfer.
That's exactly right. The trust taxes, they, at some point, they've got to be paid.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just as simple as that.
Mayor Walker, we have one additional person who's raised their hand. And that's Nancy Carpenter. Nancy, you're on with council. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for the last word. I know that I talked earlier about, you know, protecting tenants and, you know, one of the ideas that's floating around. But you're talking about the CDBG money coming back to 246,000 and how it, you know, to help some of the most vulnerable communities. And I don't want to forget, I don't want people to forget that the incarcerated community is also vulnerable. And we've already had through the Department of Corrections death in Fluvana attributed to COVID-19. And I know that our local ACRJ, as far as our individuals that are our own community members, they've worked pretty diligently on trying to get them out of of the jail. I think that there's more that could be done, more people that probably could be released. And, you know, since the CDBG money won't necessarily need community input as far as a community plan used for that money, like some of the other CDBG stuff, that hopefully that some of that can be earmarked for that. And the very last comment would be the Human Rights Commission, I would hope that you would consider strengthening that as far as housing violations. Because as we've seen through throughout communities in Virginia and the nation, there are some scrupulous landlords that will make people commit their stimulus checks to pass to rent, you know, lots of egregious things that might happen. And I don't know if Richmond, if a representative that's going to be based in Richmond will be able to handle some of these things that might be coming up. So to put that bug in the ear, to kind to put that bug in the ear, um, to kind of go forward and also the ancillary services that might be needed, um, as part of the, oh gosh, I've done forgot the N acronym, the old ABRT money. Um, you know, those services that might also help in that regard when it comes to, um, representation and information. So, thank you. And also I, Mr. Heinecke, I, I agree with what he said, uh, as well as Ms. Hudson. Uh, you all are doing a great job through an extremely traumatic trying time, and I appreciate the five of you being on council at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Mayor Walker, that concludes the public comment.
Okay. All right, council members, our, Dr. Richardson, are there any last comments? From you all?
No, Mayor.
Stacy.
I thank you all for, um, everything. Staff, thank you all for your, um, again, hard work and your commitment to the citizens and, um, I hope that you all are well while you're trying to take care of the, uh, um, community and, um, staff members, um, budget team. I can't imagine what, um, you know, what you all are going through right now either, along with like police, fire, utilities, um, DSS, um, human services. I know those phone calls that they're getting in just for the emergency assistance line, so just one part. And, um, that's a new part of their duties. We, um, you know, really, uh, you know, appreciate all efforts. The individuals who are still working, you know, and, you know, the, um, buildings, um, you know, clean, we, um,
Bus drivers.
Really, yes, bus drivers. Keep them safe, Mr. Williams. Thank you for all that you're doing for your team and, um, making sure, again, once we hear concerns that people are on the front lines having, that we're moving quickly, so address them. And, um, I know the stress that all of you department leaders are, um, and management, um, that you are under at this time, trying to figure out how to make everything work. And so just want to say, um, that we appreciate, um, your efforts and, um, let us know too what we can do as a council to help you take better care of, um, you know, yourself too. So we appreciate all of, all of your work.
Second that motion.
Third. All right. All right.
Stay safe, everybody.
Thank you.
All right.
Good night.
Good night.